Hi, thank you for your patience. We'll call the order of the special meeting of the zoning commission for the town of Simsbury Monday, February 23rd. This is a postponed and rescheduled meeting from a couple of weeks ago due to inclement weather, so we're glad you could all be here tonight and equally glad we have a forum, a forum and a court. We have four regular members, so we don't have to be all to the point. Minutes from the January 15th. Pretty short date, so I think everything looks fine. We'll accept those minutes, not as a minute. We have some consent items tonight. Application number 1501 of Greenwood Sign and Graphics Agent, Simsbury Town Shop Owner for sign permit for Olympic Taekwondo and the property located at 920 Hot Metal Street. And this needs to be rendered by the AIA, so...
Essentially, Mr. Chairman, our replacement of existing signs. We just wanted to be clear with the permission. It is a new use going into that particular location. They do meet the regulations that are in place.
No issues? No issues, so we'll allow that to be approved. An application 15-03 of Lori Di Battisto, Agent, Shepherd Hills Evangelical Lutheran Church, Owner for site plan amendment for the expansion of the existing building on the property located at 7 West Cock Road, Sessors Map I-03, Block 121, 004B.
Mr. Chairman, this is an application, and you've probably seen it in your packages, to repair some existing damage to the existing church due to some weather conditions and a very, very slight expansion to the entrance to the church to provide for cover for people entering the facility with staff's opinion that this was a minor application that could be rendered under the consent agenda. Meets all regulations.
Was reviewed and then reviewed for its seating, care, and analysis. Again, I would agree that that could be acceptable in favors, say aye, so we'll approve the, we'll be approved the consent items presented in a second. Moving on to item five on our agenda, public hearings. I guess we should maybe call, Derek, do you have the call or do you need to? No? I don't think we need to, so let's start with application number 15-02 of Hans P. Hansen, AIA Agent, Venkata Ramana, how did I do?
Good.
Sarma and Josiah Hadra, that was worse. Gulella owners for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C.9 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 5 Old Hope Drive. Okay? Good, thank you. Hi, just before you start, we'll let the record show that Jackie Maddow's arriving 7:10 in these, huh? That's all right, please understand. We're in a different room tonight, so at 7:10 Jackie will be seated for long.
Anybody?
Uh? Is it long? Yeah, he is, it's a little longer, right? All right?
Sounds good.
Yep.
All set?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I'm Hans Hansen from Hans Hansen Architectural Design, 150 Sycamore Street, Glastonbury, Connecticut. My client here is the Gulellas, much simpler, and we're looking for the accessory space, which is an addition that's going off the back of the house. If you were to drive by it on the street, you wouldn't be able to see it. It's all behind the house. And just for record, I have some copies here there you all to look around. What I've done on these copies is I have a blue hatched area that represents the actual accessory use. I believe in the application, we wrote down that there was 975 square feet. When I calculated it without the occupiable areas, with the exception of one stair, it actually comes up to 880 square feet. And if we are able to take that central stair inside out, that brings us down to 835 square feet, which would actually allow us to add the three-season porch and still be within the 1,000-square-foot accessory. And as far as I know, that's really the...
So if you took that stairway out, what would, you just would have only external access to the whole?
Well, no, no, that stair is access to the basement and the attic. And I wasn't sure, it wasn't clear when I was reading the zoning rights whether I could remove that square foot.
You mean our reg is crystal clear?
So that's the reason I bring it to the attention of the board. We would like to utilize that three-season porch as a full four-season if possible, but when I did the original calculations, we're really cutting hairs on this whole thing.
Okay. I had posed this question to you, I was unclear on whether we got, had to count the porch or not. What is...
You said heated, you said it's a three-season porch, you said heated?
It's a three-season porch. I have it designed so that it's somewhat tight and it could be heated, but the zoning rates clearly say that for that 1,000-square-foot space, it's based on the living area, which is also defined as unconditioned space. So that's the reason for that being a three-season instead of a four-season.
I think that complies, Mr. Chairman. I think in addition to that, I think the way the stairs typically calculated it, it doesn't count twice for both floors, so my opinion is it would comply with the regulations.
So if you don't count the stairway and you added the porch, you're at the magic word.
Word.
997.
Right, yep.
All right. Are there any other questions? So the owner of the property will continue to live there?
Yes. This is, this is under construction now, and I'll tell you why we're here is we would like to have the kitchenette, which is not allowed unless we get the accessory approval. So right now, this is a big closet, and we would like to be able to fit that up properly.
It has its own separate entrance, those are the...
And, right, it has its own separate entrance.
So did it come in already, for the expansion?
We already have a permit, if that's what you're saying, yes.
Yeah. And how was it proposed, just as an addition to the house?
Right now, what we permitted the drawings with is this all being an addition and that kitchenette is labeled as a closet.
But the full intention was to eventually come back and make it a kitchenette?
That's why we're here.
Because you're under construction on it?
Right, yep. We wanted to get it started before the winter, and we got it in by only a couple days.
All right, so this is a public hearing. Any other questions from the commission? Is there anyone here to speak to this application in the poll? Neighbors?
There were letters that entered by my neighbors, they told me.
Yeah, were there letters in favor? I think there were.
Yes, they were, number seven and number eight, Holdo Drive, both letters of support for full presence.
All right. A motion to close the public hearing? Any other questions?
No. I want to do a closing of the hearing.
I'll second that, all in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you, we'll get to this just a minute. Second, actually, I'm going to move to amend the agenda because the second public hearing will be...
Take over.
Yeah. So I'm going to amend the agenda to consider the application number 15-02 at this time. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Opposed?
You're opposed?
Yes.
All right, so we will now consider the application 15-02 for the special exception for accessory dwelling.
Oh, that's what I was supposed to, that's what I was proposing.
Oh, you were going to amend the agenda.
Well, yeah, I thought we were, yeah, that was our job. Okay. So I...
Yeah, we have reported it.
Okay. I got ahead of everyone, sorry.
All right, any discussion on this application? I think if we accept that it's conforming by size, the application itself is at least not facing opposition.
I agree. I just, I'd like to be consistent with my thought process on these, and that it's very similar to the other one right down the street from it, based on the fact that it's not really consistent with the neighborhood. This does go with the land, so whether it's a blood relative or not, in my mind, makes it an apartment attached to a house. Similarly, I don't know the need for a kitchen if it's a blood relative, but that's not my business. But I'll be consistent with my votes on these neighborhoods. It doesn't fit with the characteristics of the neighborhood.
But size-wise, this is not the same size as other ones that have been before us, and other ones that have been before us have more than one bedroom. So, I mean, I take that into consideration too, because those are clearly probably going to be intended as a rental unit.
This is a third of the size of the house.
I know.
In addition to the existing.
And some of the other ones that have come before us are similar in size or larger, but they're two-bedroom. You know, they're meant to be income.
So this is the same discussion we've had before, and I think, you know, based on the discussion we had with the town attorney, I think, you know, I think that the issue for us is the regulation that we have in place, which says that if we, certainly entitled to your opinion, Derek, but the, if it qualifies, if it's supported, I think the fundamental question is, does it negatively impact the neighborhood? And if there isn't someone here to testify to that effect or protest, then I think as a commissioner, we have to take that into consideration rather than...
And the vote will reflect our, the majority of the, you know, secondly, they came in for permits without, now that it's under construction, now they come back for it, I think they, you can't prove intent, but I think the idea was to get it up and then come back for the kitchenette and accept the accessory dwelling unit as well. I, it should have come in with the kitchenette in it, if, that's just my opinion. It doesn't change my overall opinion of these types of additions, accessories, et cetera.
I will say, I agree with Derek too, you know, how I vote on these. And I do think the problem lies in our language and our regulations, and I think that's something for another day. We do have no opposition in this particular case for me, so I'm supportive of it. And it does clearly state here that it's for a blood relative, although I agree, why do you need a kitchenette or a second doorway considering blood relative? You know, I have sympathy for people that have to support family issues and co-pairs and things like that, but I wholeheartedly agree with Derek that returning single-family neighborhoods into two-family neighborhoods. And again, I think this is something we need to address at another day on this regulation. It probably should be something that we should consider, maybe putting a halt on until we get the regulation cleaned up and everybody can vote on it again, because I think we've opened a Pandora's box there. I think that's quite the case, but, you know, far that, I think the application appears to be in order for when our regulations are...
All right, so I'd be looking for a motion for approval.
Mr. Preordent, a motion to approve, application number 1502 of Hans Hansen.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Approved.
Thank you. We'll return now to our next public regularly scheduled settlement. Public hearing number, application number 14-49 of Ed Lawley and Associates, Agent, Asian Relish LLC, Owner for special exceptions pursuant to Article 8, Section 8.8 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to allow up to 50% increase in the maximum coverage Article 10, Section E.5B of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to reduce the length of the parking spaces adjacent to the landscaping islands. And Article 10, Section E.5D of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to modify the surface construction requirements to allow alternative surfaces for two feet of some parking spaces on the property located at 570, to 572, Hoppin' Street, Sessors Map G12, Block 132, Lot 038, Zone V1. And shall we also, can we do, can we do these contemporaries? I would, I would recommend that. Yeah. I just wanted to be sure. So much going on in your corner. Yeah, so application 14-50 of Ed Lawley and Associates, Chen and Gao Realty LLC, Owner for special exceptions pursuant to Article 8, Section E.6 of the Town of Simsbury to permit a restaurant with liquor, beer, and wine licenses. Article 8, Section 8.8 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to allow up to 50% increase in the maximum coverage, Article 10, Section E.5.8 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to reduce the length of the parking spaces adjacent to the landscaping islands, and Article 10, Section B.5.8 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to modify the surface construction requirements to allow alternative services for two feet of some parking spaces on the property located at 568, Hoppin' Street. Mr. Law.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ed Lawley, I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor, and I've been asked by the applicants in these two separate hearings, Asian Relish LLC with regard to their application for the existing Green Tea facility at 570 Hot Metal Street, and the second, excuse me, second applicant being Chen Gao Realty LLC, which is the owner of a piece of property adjacent. Currently, there exists on the site, as I mentioned, the Green Tea Restaurant, a sea of unorganized pavement and parking, and adjacent to that is a vacant lot, which has a fair amount of parking and old garage foundation and other improvements. Our proposal is to totally reconstruct the Green Tea Restaurant to give it a new facia, new siding, new entry and sway, so there's front porch across the face of it, so that will be outdoor seasonal heating, and then construct a new building on the site adjacent. We started this application with a survey of the vacant property and an application to the zoning board of appeals. It's a very small piece of property, it's about .3 acres, it's the smallest vacant business zone property on Hot Metal Street. It's the second smallest property that's in that Zone V1 Zone or V2 Zone on Hot Metal Street. The only one that's smaller, I believe, is a exceedingly small building, which contains a barber shop and a few parking spaces out front. We came to the town with a sketch showing a parking in the front and a building towards the rear, and we were told that that did not meet the desires of the town, that it would be much better off if there was parking in the rear and a building in the front. We came back with a driveway coming in and squeezing the building down to access the parking in the rear, and that had the need for quite a few variances, and it ended up with quite a small building. And we ended up with another curb cut, though there is a curb cut here now, another functioning curb cut on Hot Metal Street. Additionally, while I was out there doing the survey work, I noticed that traffic would access the package store to this immediately to the south of this vacant lot by diagonally driving across our curb cut entrance and by leaving in the same fashion, using that almost as an acceleration ring to try to merge into the traffic. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know a problem when I see one. And comments from town staff who have been throughout this whole process very helpful, because this is a difficult piece of property, encouraged us to look for another solution. Halfway through the second, we were through our zoning board of appeals application, came back with a new one. And halfway through the second ZVA application, it looked like, excuse me, halfway through the first ZVA application, it looked like we're going down in flames because there was just, it's too small a piece of property to do anything practical with. At that time, I had a side conversation with my client, said, "We're not going anywhere with this, this is going to be, not going to have a good outcome because we just don't have enough space, we don't have enough room to work." He said, "I might buy the Green Tea Building." So we were through our application, came back, came back in, eventually getting variances for this plan that you see here. But when we're working with the Green Tea Building, we looked at that site and said, "That's over 97% hard surface coverage, and it's just a sea of pavement. The pavement actually goes right across the property line into the adjacent property. There's pavement on this property that was inadvertently put onto the dino property, that needs to be removed. There needs to be some green around the building. The front entrance is too wide, there's no islands in the parking lot, it's unorganized. Let's kind of except for the building, let's start from scratch." And so what we've come up with is a unified site plan for 568, Hoppin' Street, and 570, 572, Hoppin' Street, with one entrance that's narrower than it is now, with parking moved back from the property lines, with green space placed around the building. And in one of my documents, I told the town, we were moving, or in one of the narratives, said, "We're removing a significant amount of pavement from the building next door," and I was asked to provide a graphic that shows where are we removing 4,200 square feet of pavement from. And so this is just a little colored worksheet, it's something fancy, and it sort of color codes, forgive my coloring, it's not the best, but it shows that we're removing some pavement to the north, to the west, to the east, to the south, around the front of the building, out by a state highway where our parking lot currently trespasses over the, currently trespasses over the state highway line and coaches onto the site. So we ended up removing about 5,000 square feet of pavement from the Green Tea site, and the hard surface coverage that is on the 568 site is consistent with which, with that which was proposed to the zoning board of appeals and for which we have variances. We've also pulled the parking back, as far as non-conformances, back from the south property line, back from the north property line, we've introduced a green space between the two parking lots. We're removing pavement along the edge of the Green Tea Building and putting landscaping adjacent in those places. When all is said and done, we need quite a few approvals from the town outside of the variances we received. As far as 568, Hot Metal Street, we're asking for an approval under Article 8, Section E.6A, to allow a restaurant to exist on this property with a liquor, beer, and wine license. As regards that same property, Article 8, Section A, we're asking for a up to 50% increase in allowable decurbious surface coverage. You may elect by your actions not to approve that special use because you may find it unnecessary. This site currently complies with the zoning regulations as modified by the zoning board of appeals. We are asking that you consider some of these parking spaces and allow us to have a different surface or reduce the size of some of those parking spaces. If you agree that that's appropriate, then that special use is not necessary, that special permit is not necessary. If you say, "No, we don't, we don't want 16-foot spaces, we want them to be 18-feet in depth," then you will increase the coverage beyond what the zoning board of appeals has stated we could have. And then under that Section A, footnote A, you have the ability to do that if we ask you for permission to give you that ability to do that, if I've stated that correctly. So, and then we've asked for an approval under Article 10, Section E.5B to reduce those parking spaces. The parking spaces we're talking about, do you want to take one and pass these? We have parking spaces colored on this graphic, 1, 16, 17, 18 through 31, and 47 are all standard spaces, in that they are all 18 feet long, and they are all nine feet deep, with the exception of handicap spaces, which meet ADA requirements, and they're, in the case of a van space, 10 feet wide by 18 feet deep. In the case of the regular parking, handicap parking space, it's nine by 18. The balance of the spaces would be approved under two of the special use or special permits, wherein, under Article 10, Section E.5B, you can reduce the length of a parking space if you feel is appropriate. And we're asking that the length be reduced from 18 to 16 feet for a couple of reasons. The first is, every space that we're asking for this approval on is a space that fronts up against some landscaping. There's a K-cut curb, which is a very shallow profile curb, and then some grass beyond. And an 18-foot vehicle, of which would have to be a full-size van or a large pickup, would have its nose overhanging the green space and the curb anyway, the curb being about, almost a foot of that section, and then the landscaping would be another foot. So if you had a full-size pickup truck, say, you pulled into one of these spaces, the normal thing is to roll up till you just about come to the curb, and then some of that vehicle overhangs. So the space is effectively not paved, but is being used by the vehicle. And we think that's appropriate on the spaces that are not shaded, because it allows us to introduce more grass and more landscaping onto the site. Our goal on this site was to put as much landscaping as possible. We combed the regulations and we found that you have two provisions that would allow us to ask you for permission to do that. If you say, "That's not appropriate," we can make those spaces 18 feet, but we lose all that green space. So it's, it's a trade-off.
And every parking spot overhangs green, well, grass, not a walkway or sidewalk?
Correct.
In every case?
Correct, in every case. And it's the unshaded spaces, and if you look at these, any spaces that go nose to nose, we're saying those should meet your spec, because there's no opportunity for overhanging somebody else's parking space. Any space that's accessible space, handicap accessible space, that has to be 18 feet. That's what we're saying, we're provided 18 feet. And any space that touches up against a green, we can get a benefit by this provision. Now, your regulations only allow up to 50% of the spaces having that provision, and so we need a second approval, which would allow some of the spaces to have their hard surface changed to curb and a foot of grass, because your regulations don't allow you to apply the first provision I talked about, which is reducing the dimension of the space on more than so many spaces. So there's six spaces that are left over that we've opted to ask you if we can have that last two feet of that space a different surface than regular pavement, which would be K-cut curb and grass. The end result is the same thing, we have sufficient space to park any vehicle, and every vehicle, but we have more green space. Again, if you say, "Ed, that's not appropriate, you are using the provisions in the regulations, but we don't think they apply in this case," we'll make the spaces 18 feet. But the goal was to do the best job we could in getting rid of pavement and replacing with green space. Outside of... Outside of, outside of that, the site plan is fairly unique in that it has a lot of items that are going on that are shared. For instance, we moved the dumpster several times based on staff comments, based on functionality, based on talking to people who came to the site now, or come to the site now to pick up the dumpsters. And we elected to put the dumpster behind the Green Tea building in a masonry enclosure, three sides are masonry. The walls are eight feet tall. It has a concrete pad on the bottom and two gates that face the north that have privacy slats. So we've, we've put the dumpster here. We have one dumpster location. Currently, the truck comes in, picks up the dumpster, backs out and leaves. In this case, the dump, the truck could come in, pick up the dumpster, and leave through the site. Dumpster pickup, of course, for restaurant uses scheduled, and patrons are not there, or usually in a lunch and dinner restaurant, usually it's between 8:00 and 10:00 before food prep starts. So the dumpster is shared. Of course, the curb cut is shared, so that we have only one curb cut on Hot Meadow Street. The access through the site is shared. There's a bike rack proposed on this facility, which is shared. The storm system is shared. Sanitary sewer crosses both properties right now, and that is shared. The stormwater management system is shared, and so that we only have one sign at the entrance and not another sign here to confuse things. We're sharing the sign. In order to share all of these items, we need not only approval of this commission of a unified site plan, but we need approval of a cross easement document, which was submitted to town staff, which was then submitted to the town attorney, critiqued, and then modified to accept all of his redlining corrections. And so this cross easement allows this property to utilize that property for access and parking likewise. It allows the bike path, the bike rack to be utilized, it allows the walkways to be utilized, it allows the dumpsters to be utilized, and everything else which is listed on this. I present this because it would be, of course, a concern for this commission to approve a site plan wherein there's only one access without appropriate rights. And this would provide the appropriate rights as determined by your town attorney for both One of the items that is shared is the storm drainage system. Currently, there's no organized storm drainage on either of these two sites. Currently, there's a certain amount of hard surface when you add up the pavement and concrete pad that's on the infiltment site, the pavement rooftop that's on this site, that is actually reduced. If you look at the front sheet of the set of documents, the statistics are there. But after development, there will be less hard surface on this property than exists today. There will consequently be less stormwater runoff from this property than exists today. But we didn't stop there. We did a careful examination of the site, and because the owner of this property is related to the purchaser of this property, the, and the purchaser of this property is currently the occupant and proprietor of Green Tea. We looked at all of the functionality of the site, all of the things that were right, all of the things that were wrong. The second category had a bigger list. And decided to address the drainage by placing some drainage structures in the front of the property. This site sheets off onto our property, so we're placing a double catch basin to pick up and control that stormwater. And then in the back of the property, we've designed a stormwater absorption system that has no outflow, outflow from it during annual storms, five-year storms, 10-year storms, even up to a 25-year storm. There will be some sheet flow here. All the roof leaders go into that system, and most of the pavement goes into that system. All of this pavement and roof leaders go into that system, and all of this pavement and roof, which drains onto our property, the butter to the north, drains onto our property, goes into that system. So that's a dramatic decrease in the amount of stormwater that comes onto and leaves, comes out of our site and leaves the, does out of the adjacent site, excuse me. This stormwater management system was initially proposed with deep catch basins and other provisions to treat the water before it went into the infiltration system. Your town engineer insisted on a DDE-approved water quality unit, which is now incorporated into the plans. Because it's such a small site, the smallest water quality unit that is made, which is supposed to treat the first inch of runoff, and then there's an overflow provision, so the rest of it can go on untreated. And the reason being that the first inch of runoff brings all the pollutants with it, and after that, the water runoff from the pavement is relatively clean. Not only does it treat the first inch, but the annual storm, the two-year storm, the five-year storm, up to about the eight-year storm is fully 100% treated. So we're gonna end up with a really green stormwater management system, if I can use that, that term. And a significant decrease in not only the rate of runoff onto our budding property, but the quantity or the total volume of runoff, because so much is being reintroduced into the soil, as it would have occurred before any of this pavement was placed. In our analysis, we looked at the existing drainage systems, excuse me, the existing drainage pattern on all the property that contributed to water that flowed off, whether it was part of Hot Meadow Street, part of the butter to the north, or our sites. And the water flow was generally in this direction. So we analyzed what is happening beforehand and afterwards to this butter, what is happening beforehand and afterwards to that butter. And there was a decrease in both rate flows in all cases. That report was submitted to the town, revised twice at the recommendation of the town engineer, and is part of the record if you desire to see it. For the record, I will submit that one copy. One of our goals, starting out, was of course reducing impervious surfaces, which I talked about. We also wanted to reduce nonconformity. This is the site with most of the nonconformities. There are some nonconformities here in that the pavement comes up to the property line in this area, and we're pulling it back. That's the existing access drive. Other nonconformities here are the pavement, the pavement along the southern side of the Green Tea building goes right up to the property line, the pavement here goes up to the property line, the pavement here is contiguous right across the property line. So basically, there used to be 22 parking spaces abutting the north property line, 10 spaces abutting the south, and two crossing over the street line into the state right away. We reduced the 22 spaces to 17. We pulled them back between three and nine feet from the property line. Significant reduction in nonconformance. We've added four-foot lawn area along this area, pulling the parking spaces all four feet back. All pavement crossing the street line has been removed. The access drive is narrowed. It's not a nonconformance, but it's not a good idea to have a really wide access drive because you get uncontrolled traffic patterns. And basically, there were, there are 30, currently 32 parking spaces in the setback area, and after approval, there will be 23 spaces in the setback area, but significantly reduced intrusion into that setback area. What we've attempted to do is create a, an attractive setting. I haven't talked about the architecture, but we did run that, well, with the design review board, but I don't have colored drawings, but the buildings, whoops, losing it later. Buildings are attractively designed. There's brownstone around the butt, around the base, and on the Hot Meadow Street side peak, and some shingling has been introduced into that side of the street to give it a better character, a better look. This is the side that faces north towards the existing parking lot, and the main entrance would be almost actually to the rear of the, of the site with parking this. On the Green Tea, the materials have been carried around all sides of the building, and the colors and textures have been approved by the design review board. On the Green Tea building, this is the existing building, this is the proposed. None of these windows are functional, and none of these will be functional, but this mansion roof is being pulled back to a vertical face, and then completely, this stonework will come out, a completely different look on the, on the existing Green Tea building. I'm not sure if I have it here. That's the other side of Green Tea showing the, the fascia being pulled out, the mansion roof being cut back in this area, and the fascia being pulled out. Lot of stonework, and it's real stone, it's not artificial stone. And this is the, the dumpster will have the same stone base. It's 7'4" to the bottom of the coping, and the coping is almost eight inches thick, so it's almost eight feet tall, privacy slats in the, in the screening. And then the signage will be halo lit, again, the same stone across the base, and the signage is a total of eight feet wide, three feet tall, and will be out. In the location, the current Green Tea sign would pull back a little bit because the current Green Tea sign is actually within the state right of way. So that would be the signage. So there's a unit, so the unifying effect of the stone and the architecture and the colors on the two buildings, unifying effect of the site plan. And we think when it's all done, it will be functional, very attractive, increase the tax base, and make the neighbors happy. If you have any questions, myself or the applicant, one of the applicants, we're here to try and answer.
That was a great presentation. Thanks, Ed. I'm curious as to why it didn't come in as a PAD application, seeing that even though there are two parcels, we're dealing with generally the same owner. Can anybody talk to that point?
Yeah, I can, there will be. Initially, as Mr. Ollie said, the application sort of evolved from one single site, one single small site that was very difficult to deal with. And then ultimately, the applicant decided to purchase the other site as well. Because they're, it's just one use, so basically, they're both commercial uses there, there's really no other use there. A lot of the comments have recently come up with regard to whether the PAD was supposed to be used for mixed uses, whether there's more than one use, and so on. The zoning fits for this particular application, so there really were a series of site plan issues, but the zoning actually fit the use that was proposed, so that's why it didn't go any further. That would also require a zone change, which is another bar that they really didn't need to jump through or over. So that's basically how that happened.
Thank you. So I guess the gist of all that is 16-foot parking places, or 18-foot parking places, 16 feet plus two feet of grass, right? That's, that's, I like that. That's, the only issue with it is what do you do in the winter? There's snow everywhere.
Well, first of all, I own a truck that's, that's 18 feet long. I also own, I also own a car that's not even 16 feet long. My brother owns a car that's probably 14 feet long. Most cars today are not over 16 feet. Additionally, the K-cut curb is, is mountable, and you can run a snowplow along it, scrape the snow off of it. We don't envision it as a significant problem because cars are generally getting smaller. This is not the day Lincoln Town Car anymore.
Have you seen the new?
Even full-size, even full-size cars, pardon?
Have you seen the new Yukon XL?
Yeah.
Gas prices are down.
But we have a space for you. It's right out front.
I, I, I just say.
I totally neglected to mention that there are two apartments involved in the new building. They are on the second floor, they have their own entrance, they are smaller than the first floor of the restaurant by far, and we have a parking apartment, including the apartments, of 47 spaces, and we have 47 spaces on this site.
Are they one-bedroom apartments?
Uh, they're, no, they're two-bedroom apartments. James's business plan is, and this is, will be his fourth restaurant, is to open a restaurant and have housing, because most of the people that are new into the restaurant business don't have cars or can't, if they afford cars, they can't afford much else, don't have cars. And so, for instance, every morning, he takes his van around to one facility and picks up his workers and brings them to the place where they can start out. This sort of models his life pattern, where he worked in a restaurant for years, had two jobs, no vehicle, saved his money, saved his money, saved his money, and then moved on. You can't move on if you don't save your money.
So how far is this new building setback from the road compared to Tino, the tailors or whatever?
Its closest point from the road, in, its closest point from the road is at this corner, and it's 20 feet. The mid-space is 25. And as discussed with the zoning board of appeals, the average depth of the grass strip along between the gutter and the street line is normally 10 feet, and in this case, it's 20 feet. So they took that into consideration in considering this, because the, the street line does not follow the street, it takes an angle and diverges here. So this grass strip is more than normal. So the distance from the street line to the building is 20 feet, but the distance from the building to the gutter is 40 feet, or very close, 38, 40 feet. At the center, it's more like 45. And that's the reason they provided the variance, because there was a hardship given the size of the property and the configuration of the road right away.
So when this is done, there'll be no connectivity to the parking to the door?
Yes, that's correct. Except, except for a small slot right there.
Yeah.
To allow the drainage to come through. And if you look at the demo plan, we're sawcutting six inches back from, or a foot back from the property line, and we're placing a, a regular curb along the edge of that property line just onto our property to control their parking. Because there's a paint stripe, actually, right down the property line, right down. And so the other side comes up and parks there, they'll be allowed to continue to do that with no interruption whatsoever.
For the signage, you have the street sign and under the Green Tea sign, is there a sign on the new building too?
There will be a sign on the new building, and the names of the restaurants have not been cited. Green Tea will most likely change its name, and the new restaurant has not been named, but there will be some signage. This is the entry, and you know, this is already pretty much done, there'll probably be some signage over here. We'll have to come back to staff, and if they determine that we have to come to you or to design review, we will go through that process at that time. But that, that's one item that we have not addressed, I think.
Is, is, there is a sign on there or there isn't?
No, no, there will be, but I don't have any details, and so if we have to come back for that one item.
Will it be on the Hot Meadow side of the?
I don't, I don't envision one at this point in time. I think our focus is not to draw attention to the side of the building, and people start looking for, "Where's the entrance?" Draw, draw attention to the sign. Here's the entrance. Of course, once you've been there, you'll be back, so.
Of course. So is, the people that own the old Tino, the tailors property buying Green Tea? How is this working? I just wanted to be clear on that.
There are two, there are two corporate entities. One corporate entity is Chenagow, that's James and his wife. The other entity, because of liability, financing, and everything else, we have to keep the property line separate. The other entity is Asian Relish, which is his wife. Don't ask me why she gets three-quarters of the pie and he got a quarter, but that's a, that's the way it's set up. So there'd be two financing packages, two licensing packages, two.
Same family.
But, yeah.
That helps the user. Any other questions for Mr. Ollie before I'm going to this public?
I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, this applicant has, as you may have gathered from the presentation, jumped through a number of hoops to complete this process. I think the exercise with the ZBA was probably noteworthy in and of itself. Those are noted in the staff reports. In light of the variances that are enumerated in the staff report, which are significant, there's no question. I think that the significant improvement in the property is through the applicant's persistence has reduced either not, or eliminated nonconformities with regard to stormwater and parking, has also improved the architecture to the site. Proceedments are also important, and those facts that have already been through the town attorneys, as the applicant has said. In fact, it's also made the access to Hot Meadow Street safer with regard to narrowing that access down to one particular location. There is either newer upgraded architecture on both buildings, which was approved by the designer review board.
All right, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this application? Last, last chance to ask questions of the applicant.
Do you have a kind of a walkway between the two buildings?
Yes.
Is that just painted? Is there?
No, it's textured, it's, it's, it's either gonna be pavers or textured concrete, but it'd be differentiation. And if you study the landscaping, that plan is very hard to read, but if you study the landscaping plan, you'll find signage that is discreetly placed, but tells people, for instance, in the back, where you have the one-way connection to yield to somebody coming, I mean, there's a yield sign on those sides, there's a, you know, be careful of pedestrians. there's fire lane signs, et cetera.
Kevin, you were talking about this area right here.
No, the.
Okay.
And, you know, during the construction sequence sign, there's even a fence placed on the southern edge of the green tea walkway to ensure that nobody goes over there and afterwards. It's very carefully been designed to be handicap accessible, because no grade exceeds five percent.
This is not passable by a vehicle between the.
No, it's not, this is going to be a wall. That's a rated wall.
Oh, okay.
That's been reviewed by the fire marshal, the building department, I believe. That's a rated wall.
It used to be a drive, but here isn't now.
Yeah, still is.
Yeah, I guess it still is there, right?
And during construction, during the construction process, that will be maintained as a construction entrance for as long as possible to avoid other disruptions. And then, and the construction sequence, you know, spells out to start the construction of the parking lot in the rear and then move towards the foundation and then remove the driveway. So they're kind of working out of the site too. And there's a construction sequence for Green Tea, a separate construction sequence for the new building, and the construction schedule is that Green Tea will hopefully start July when spring gets here. And we're going to start the new building the year after.
And the two outdoor dining areas, they are enclosed from, for liquor control?
Yes, that's correct. And there was a question, it was correspondence with staff, we're not sure if that's going to be, you know, a masonry wall that mimics the building or part masonry, part iron, or all iron, but the liquor control has that down to the table.
So your access is from inside the building?
That's correct. On both buildings.
Where does the multi, where does the apartments come into this decision-making process?
They're permitted in the zone, actually.
They are?
They are. And I think that the initial intent was probably for something like this, where people could work in the building and actually reside there as well. The fact is that they do and they may not need a car as well, so that may help in the property spaces as well.
Oh, is apartments next door across the street from the restaurant?
Yes.
But there's market, they're market apartments, they're market rate apartments. So is there a required parking for those apartments?
Yes. We mean to, we're not considering those people as being without vehicles.
Correct.
But most likely, they will be without vehicles, but your parking regulations say that we have to provide spaces for them and we have.
Correct.
In fact, those spaces are designated as the rearmost spaces in the parking lot for that property.
All right. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Make motion for the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right. According to our agenda, the next item will be to discuss and take possible action on an agenda item. The only one left is an application that's 14-49, 14-50. Am I going to rehold that again? I think we've said.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a recommendation?
Yeah, please.
Should the commission decide to approve these applications, staff recommends that they be approved the way they're written on this particular agenda. Now, there was a lot of flexibility with regard to whether you wanted to do this or do that. The cleanest thing, based upon a fairly long period of time looking at this application, is if you decided to approve it based upon the way it's written here for both of these applications, that would make it very clear, interface with the zoning board of appeals, approvals, and make the special permit applications clear as well. Special permit, as you know, probably has to be filed with the town clerk as well, so we'll take care of that should the commission decide to approve it, but that's our recommendation.
Thank you. So I've followed this project from the, I think, preliminary review at Design Review Board. I think it's another in a series of improvements to properties that along the sort of core part of Hot Metal was truly welcome, thoughtful, put a lot into a small space, and I think a lot of thought went into that, obviously a lot of work, so I'm supportive of this combined effort. Any questions? So I'll move the approval of these two as recommended by Mr. Peck. As outlined in the agenda, seconded by Mr. Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is application fourteen dash forty-eighth of John M. McCarthy, agent, Chestnut Hill Associates of Simms Berry LLC, owner for site plan amendment, the Ensign House at Chestnut Hill, consisting of thirty-five women units on a property located at six-ninety Hot Metal Street, accessories map G eleven, block one thirty-two, block zero five-three, zones SC one and SC three. Kevin, sit down. Okay, I want to sit there.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. I'm Bill Crossby from Crossby Arts Tech, and we're here tonight to present to you some changes that we made to the plan that we showed you in November. A couple of developments since that last presentation. One, we have more accurate information about our wetland, adjacent wetlands. You can see on the updated survey, we found that the adjacent property has wetlands in this location, and we have surveyed the slope in here, which is rather significant, and the impact of that additional information has caused some of the changes I'm about to show you. We've made a few other changes based on recommendations from the various agencies, recommendations we've been before, as well as. So what I'd like to do tonight is just lead you through those changes. So this is the plan that we had as it exists today, the existing building with the addition of the parashaw over here, which is a garage and a remote teller that exists on the rest of the site. Behind the building is primarily pavement. We had shown, this is our site development plan with renovation of the existing building and two seven apartments, and construction of two new buildings, two residential buildings, one with each with fourteen units. We have one on the east property line here and then one to the south, and then we have a seven space parking garage, a single story that was completed as well. So our revised site plan, we've modified the layout by shifting this south building away from that slope and the wetlands that existed bottom of the slope, trying to get the building all the way out of the slope itself and be five feet away from the top of the slope. And doing that, the building in this area is over the parking that we had in the previous meeting, so we're able to get some additional covered parking under the building in this corner, but because of the dimensions of the parking lot, sixty feet, we have double loaded arrangement, we've expanded the amount of the building to cover the parking completely, and we've also connected it to the east building with a covered steps that lead from the upper parking level down to the lower level. Now, in shifting the building to the east, the south building toward the east, if we didn't connect it, we'd end up with a slot between the buildings, or space between the buildings, which to me didn't seem like a good solution. It was better to gain the additional parking and make the connection with the one-story area. We've also modified the, this end of the east building. I think last time we showed adding an entrance as an option to that building, and we've gone ahead and done that, so we don't have an entrance porch and steps that face Drake Hill Road. And thirdly, we've divided up that seven car garage into three small garages, a three car here, a two car here, and two car here, to minimize the scale and also space that the covered parking lot would look more even here in the site. These are the plans for the units that I showed last time, nothing was really changed there, it's still second apartments. And we're going to be restoring the exterior of the building, but we'll be using state federal disorder tax credits, which will be held to a varying standard for restoration. So we'll work as it does today, but we'll be fully restored and visioned. Be adding a small one-story addition to the south side where a sun porch used to exist, and that will be treated like a glass tin, a sun porch, and it'll be the kitchen for the front door front. And then this is the plan that I showed you last time for the east building, has parking underneath, which puts some storage space fed from that eastern driveway. And then the apartments on the first level, the first floor, that walk in from that higher level of the site are all flats, and then common stairways lead up to townhouses on the second floor, which may have bedrooms fit in under the roof slope with dormers on the third floor. This is what that building looks like, essentially the same as what I showed you in this. And elevation. Now, we've modified that elevation to include on the Drake Hill side, to include an entrance door, a front porch, make it look like a residential structure that's a side facing Drake Hill. And then on the south end of the building, it connects to the second building via this covered stair, which is one-story right on my side of the site. And this is the plan for the south building. We widened the end of this building to cover, to cover the parking, so sixty feet from here to here, and these units have great views of the mountain. And then we've added a townhouse unit at this end of the building, which is one-story on this side, which is closest to Hot Metal Street, and then it goes up to two stories in this area, and then it actually goes to two and a half stories from this point over. So if you can imagine the site plan, we've shifted the building to the east and we've also shaped the building so that it diminishes in scale on this side as it faces Hot Metal all the way down to the one-story all the way down here. And these are the garages, the two and three car garage. They'll have hip roofs and brownstone exterior walls, which are the architecture of the site. And a question came up about what will the trash enclosure look like on that upper level adjacent to one of the garages, so we're envisioning a brownstone base wall with a screen wall above it and then a pair of doors that will actually be screened out. This is the 3D model that we showed before, and that's the modified version of the slide for the south building back. Now, we didn't change the garage just because that came after we made the building change, and we just forgot to do that. The view is from the intersection that I showed before. This view would be the same, same view it was before, you really can't see the new buildings from this angle because of the growth in vegetation that we're going to maintain this part of the site. And this is the view from Hot Metal straight on as proposed last time. This is the change, so really that south building just slides and it's got a lower scale to it. And this is from the trees, about the trees. This is the view from the intersection of Drake Hill and Hot Metal that we showed last time, and then this is where the change. And then this is the view from Drake Hill Road, about the trees. That doesn't really change, obviously. The garage will get a little smaller, but it'll be on the end, you know, the same here in the building, the south building. You don't notice a difference.
Supposed to be four, the entrance off of Drake Hill.
Yes, it is, the one we showed last time, the entrance, correct. And this is with the trees, and this is with the entrance. Right now, how we've actually incorporated it into the plan, it's the speed section which will slide. These are just views that I showed last time. Any questions?
I'd really like to see a better view of what's going on in this corner here, I just haven't seen lately. Either a front on or.
So this, so let's see, I don't have perfect shots of it.
I think I've seen all the views from the street lane, that looks, everything looks great. Right. I'm just curious if it, it doesn't look like it's perfectly.
Before, there was a little bit of space there, and this is, so this is the entrance door that's there, this is the one-story roof that connects the two buildings. And if you look at the site plan, there'll actually be some landscaping in this corner, so a lot of that is street.
What you'd like is, I'm sorry, Chair. Like is to be able to stand about here and look at that corner, but there's a lot of discussion about this in design review this evening as well. The buildings themselves are, as you showed them before, except they're slid down and there's a little bit of a change in the back.
Yeah, I think that looks great. I just want to see that one little corner. You know, is it truly the stair up?
Well, the stairs, I can explain this because I've been listening. There's a door here, there's a stair that goes down.
Right.
And it has a roof and then it goes down.
Yeah.
So it's, it's as wide as a stairway, covered, and connects these two buildings.
And it's lit, I assume.
Yep. Before, before the snowstorms, we had an outside stair right here.
Yeah, I just, you know, an enclosed staircase on the backside of that building, I, I think, first I think security issue, but that's why I want to, I want to visualize it.
Well, it'll be car key access for residents only.
Oh, so it'll be closed on both ends?
Yep.
Okay. So where does it get you, top to the bottom or into the buildings?
It gets you top to the bottom, because there really is not a lot of common space in these buildings, they just have the common stairwells that occur in these spaces.
How wide of a gap is between the building? Like ten feet?
Oh, between these, yeah, between units, about ten.
So why are we connecting it?
So there's not a wing tunnel, dark slot.
It looks like a label.
No, he thinks it looks better. He's the architect.
Well, if it's, if you get too close, it's going to feel narrow.
Yeah.
It's going to be dark. Nothing's going to grow there, it's just going to be a comfortable space, whereas if you can move it and have it real width, it'll just be, it's a better solution.
And it really provides access from the lower to the upper.
Yeah. Where's the guest parking, upstairs, up top or anywhere?
Anywhere, there's an extra space. We have seventy-eight parking spaces, but we have thirty-eight units because we gained three of this building as we slid it and walked it. We have thirty-eight units because we gained three of this building as we slid it and widened this and added the townhouse on the end here. We gained three, so we have a little more of two spaces right here.
The tenants will actually access their property from down below through the common stairways.
I'm just saying, even if, if you, if you didn't have this feature here, then people would use it as an access point. Either, I don't know how they would do it, but they would find a way to get either, unless it was screened off on either side. But otherwise you have to walk all the way around the building to get back up to the upper level.
I think most visitors are going to park up here because that's where the front doors are and that's, this is the obvious entrance that is the center of the site.
Yeah, it's the most logical on time.
The only reason, this may never get used or may be occasional use if somebody's, it's here and they want to use this dumpster. They'll go that way or they may hide the parking that is closer to the parking right here. But it's better than having a dark slot. It's, um, just arrow, not a portal.
You would just use fish barrels. So these garages up top, they're not going to have storage rooms like the, those other buildings down below?
Uh, no, these are just regular stuff.
Just big enough for a car.
Yep, and a bicycle on the road. They're not going to have the storage space that these other things have.
The parallel lines along the, the future order, those spots, what would you expect to be used in that? Those last to be used?
Probably, that they would probably be used by people who live in these units and already have one car.
Right, so each unit has one car that has one garage, okay.
What are the interior steps of that little area made up, made from concrete or?
Um, probably.
Any other questions? So, uh, Hiram, in terms of staff recommendations for this application?
This application, like the other one we saw this evening, Mr. Chairman, has, has been in and pending for a while. It's gone through a number of iterations. The applicant discovered the grading to the south and the wetlands and the setback line fairly late in the process. So necessitated some of the building changes you see here this evening. It did, there, there is an increase in three, of three units. The design review board discussed that at length earlier this evening. Did ultimately, although not unanimously, receive approval from the, the design review board. Couple of quick recommendations, I would say that parking that's shown at the corner of Drake Hill and Hop Meadow should, if possible, be designated as visitor parking only. So that that isn't constantly filled with, with vehicles, if at all possible. Should be screened where possible. The other thing I would say that should...
Hiram, to be clear, you're talking about these parking spaces?
Yes, that's right, exactly, yep. So that if, if at all possible, those should be visitor spaces only. Stormwater plans should be approved by town engineer prior to issuance of any CO. For this particular site, because it is tight, is an important item here. The other thing is with the architectural changes that you've seen this evening, the most recently submitted plans, we have no other, no other comments. It's a tight site, there's a lot going on, but there's a significant building that's being preserved, which we think is a significant. We have seen people coming through the door with plans for this particular site that, that look nothing like leaving that building in place and so.
I think all of it works well. I love it. If you maintain all of those natural trees and everything, I think it really is. On the backside of the building, how steep is that? Is there going to be a wall?
There is a big brownstone wall that's here and we're going to look at the condition of that to decide.
Over on the other side where the crate drops off, that's like Bickford. What is that, like, retaining wall or?
No, there's, there's no retaining, about five feet from the top of the slope. We're trying, trying not to disturb the slope.
They're kind of high up, right above that's like Bickford. So there's no concern of erosion or anything?
Conservation discussed that extensively during their hearing on the, on the, and so one of the reasons for staying five foot back from the edge of the bank is to maintain that. We spent a lot of time looking at that one terrace that's right in the very corner there and looking at how that would be constructed and making sure that, that no erosion took place in that particularly sensitive corner as well. So they're going to have to be careful there, no question about that.
The roofing material on the new one is asphalt, right?
Yes.
It's still reddish.
Duplay asphalt shingle.
Right, and what are you doing with the old house?
We're going to restore the clay pile.
Right, so how close are those two colors actually? Is there a difference between them?
Um, they're about as close as you can get with asphalt.
I noticed that too, you know, a friend of mine, Lou, he showed me some shingles that you put on a house that look just like slate. But there are some, I don't know what they're made of.
Baby diapers.
Wouldn't that?
Recycled baby diapers.
No, I don't know, but wouldn't that match more of the original building you were storing rather than asphalt shingles?
Um, depends on the color and the shape. The shape is, clay pile shapes.
Because I know from the right off in the presentation, it was like a contrast between them.
Yes, it'll look different, yes.
Still a designer. Can't get it out. Yeah, so I, I'll, I'll just make a quick statement. I, I do want to be sure that there was discussion at this design review board about, and this, this higher upset of about the density and there was net increase of the three, three units here. But I'll say the same thing here that I said at that meeting, which is that there was considerable movement back and forth here. First saw this in informal, there were two very large buildings that were as high at both ends. And I think that Hiram has been very responsive to that. Did conflict the move backwards on the south building, but I think all in all, this is a very important addition to downtown. It seems very, and so I'm going to approve with the provisos that Hiram had it relative to the groundwater, whatever else you said.
Visitor parking stormwater. Architectural, I'm going to show. And I assume that the, as, as Post said, try to match the shingles on the existing building to the extent possible.
So that's, I, I moved it for a second.
Second. About two seconds.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
The only risk you run in trying to match the colors as closely as possible is that morally clashing with each other.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I would certainly, because of the architectural nature of this whole site, I think that the, the owner and the architect need to take that into account.
I think sometimes the contrast is better, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
If you don't match it exactly, then you're out of it, of course.
All right. In formal discussion, thirty-six fifty-four Hoskins Road Development, where the workforce housing overlay is.
Good evening, Bill Richter from Sunlight Construction. Give me one second, I'll set up my little presentation. I'm here to talk to you about, yes, F as in Frank, E R R I G N O. And the company name is Sunlight Construction. We're a building development company located in Avon, Texas. Longer than I can count. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a, actually two parcels of land that are contiguous to each other off of Hoskins Road. Very close to, affect a one end of the butts of the National Skating Center. Peacefully part of Hoskins Road. Presently zoned I-1. And I have an idea to essentially repurpose that property for use as residential. Specifically to a place, I believe you call it the Workforce Housing Overlay. Just give the way this one. And could you hand out some of the...
I've only lived in town for about thirty years, so where is this on Hoskins Road?
Okay, so let me familiarize you. So here's the, here's the split Hoskins, here's the skating center. Okay. I believe it's, Fish has the apartments that are right over here. Getting, getting closer to...
No, still not, where's Sunrise?
Okay, Sunrise, I'm not sure, but Sunrise.
Well, so is that Eli Road?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got it, I got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
So as you can see, actually, and so there's really two, two different parcels of land, two different owners that were merged together. So property line right here, so it's about eleven or so acres, maybe twelve here, a little sixteen over here. Uh, this, this property over probably fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years actually went through a, an earth mining operation from the Dorar Brothers and Sims Berry, they're coming. It's now being kind of reestablished and, and back to this piece of land over here is pretty much virgin ground. And it's best money now, it's just never been developed for at least nine decades. So the frontages are, there is a little bit of frontage along here that goes out to Hoskins. There's also some frontage over here. In between are some older residences, modest type houses in there. And actually just personal land right here, which behind those houses is pretty much what it's all.
That's the start of Caldwell property on the left.
This is Griffin Land, that's right, yep, exactly right. So that's there immediately to the west. To the north, Sims Berry, not a Sims Berry land. And, yep, skating center. And further, yeah, big Y. Further north is Dorsey Crossing. Just to give you kind of a...
Big Y is going to be in front of the shop.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be east of here, it'll be in front of, to the north of the skates and right up there. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, you're right, here, here. Yeah, exactly. So you can see the property is kind of tucked in here a little bit. It is, except for a slope over an extreme western side, which I'll have Gilbert to explain to you momentarily. It's a pretty much level piece of land. I've been studying, as they say, working with Hiram on, trying to get something where we can create a, create some housing that is a little bit more modestly priced. That conforms to your requirements of at least twenty percent of it being occupied by, is it eighty, eighty percent of the median, right? Eighty percent of the median income for Simsbury. A little bit of history, the property last was actually, when it got zoned industrial, there was an industrial subdivision approved here. I want to say ninety-five, does that sound right, like something like that? And I don't recall exactly what the square footage is and number of buildings were, but that, that was never, nothing was ever built here. The approval lapsed. And really since that time, the demand for what you would call suburban industrial parks has waned. But to do industrial today, you really need to be near a major corridor of an interstate highway or something like that. So it really has been very little demand and I think that's probably the way things will play out. I think it's better suited for residential, it's virtually all residential around here, except for the, you know, the commercial corridor along Hop Meadow. And all the utilities are available, we know that public sewer is available, water is available. I did talk to the gas company briefly and they're interested in this type of a development. They would extend, they're right on a hop metal right now, so it's really not that long an extension. So when I started studying the workforce overlay zone, to quote from your own regulations, to create additional housing opportunities in Simsbury while also promoting appropriate development. So I, I think what that tells me is that we, there is a need for a type of product that is more affordable. And that, I think Hiram gave me the stat, was three or three and a half percent existing stockings that is very as deemed as affordable. So there's quite a bit of gap there if you're trying to reach the ten percent, which is another recommendation. What I have in mind for this property would be to classify this under one of the six sub-districts in your regulation. The one that I would choose would be mixed housing. I would choose single-family detached homes. I would then go to attached townhouses. And on the far eastern side of the property, I would propose a apartment building. I did it specifically because you're up against an existing apartment complex here. You have the skating center here, so this is, this kind of wanted to be higher density over this area. And as we move a little bit towards the west and toward the north, I think it would be better to create kind of a single, single-family area over here. This would be proposed to be all on private roads. It would be as typical for a situation like this, would be a homeowners association that would be responsible for, for maintenance and so forth. Uh, oh, I, I didn't mention, but I know you guys noticed already, the deed restrictions would apply to this. I think it's a thirty-year restriction. And I want to be clear that our intention would be to provide, affordability would apply to all these types of units. It would not just be the single families or the attachment applied to the apartments, all of, and it would be a minimum of twenty percent. I think that, I think the, the key to, the underlying theme that I would want to run through this development would be, there should be no distinction between the so-called workforce unit or affordable unit and any other unit. So architecturally, thematically, it should be impossible to tell the difference. And I'm going to have Jack Kemper show you a few designs that we have. And I would, I would even challenge you to tell me which ones you think would be more of one. So a few years ago, more than a few, I guess at this point, I built a development in Avon called Spring Metal, which is put, we put it behind, off of forty-four behind where Friendly's is. And there, there was a need to create some affordable housing in Avon at that time. Arguably, there still is. We built fifty-six houses in there and it was, it was kind of the same type of background where it had been zoned for commercial industrial use. There were no takers for that. We created something there that became kind of this multi-generational, very modestly priced development. Architecturally, colonial, traditional, kind of like that village type of a concept. And even to this day, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's proved that you can, you can create something that has different generations, different affordability choices, different types of people who are living there. And it works pretty well. I mean, we, we actually have, even to this day, as I keep track of that place, you've got this kind of, the, the grandparents, you know, you've got, you've got kind of the, the empty nesters are in there. And you have the young professionals, singles, whatnot. It's really kind of a interesting cross-section, if you will, of, of owners here. And I think it's worked out pretty well. So this would be a little bit expanded on that. We only have single family in that development, so I'm, I'm kind of playing that we have different uses over here. So the goal would be to, to increase your supply of affordable housing. Again, to, with the underlying caveat, to produce and create housing that has, that doesn't, doesn't spare kind of an architectural theme. And kind of where all, all units would blend together and so forth. I mentioned the homeowners association and private roads and so forth. I think at this point, what I'd like to do is have Bill Richter from Richter Seegan, who, who did the plan here, just come up and give you kind of a quick tour of how we got to where we were, or where we are with this. And then I'll have Jack Kemper come up and show you some of our proposed architecture.
Well, Bill has explained actually most of what I would...
Okay.
Never unusual, so the bill will be cheaper.
Okay.
Can you give me your name?
Okay, it's Bill Richter, that's R I C H T E R, Richter Seegan in Avon. Twenty-eight acres of land, we have opportunity for two frunches coming out to Hoskins. Obviously with the development of size, we need... Obviously, with this development this size, we need alternate ways in and out. The idea of transitioning from the more dense apartments through townhouses to single family is probably a logical way that we can address this parcel configuration and access The opportunity with the single family to create something internal, create a sense of place for this development, as well as feeling a part of all this, is really the goal of the, the network that we're showing. You know, this is not a highly detailed plan, it's just basically a density study and a relationship to explain how we might approach this parcel. One of the key things about the parcel is, right now, there's a two-hundred-foot conservation easement that is a leftover piece from the previous subdivision for the industrial parcel. You know, the obvious thing was, you had an industrial building, huge parking lot, truck circulation, that wanted to be separated from the existing residential along Hoskins. You know, the question is whether that easement is apropos to this development and the relationship of single family to single family, um, is a question that we'll ultimately want to resolve as part of this. The second plan that you have in there actually takes that conservation easement and reapplies it to the west, uh, property line. This also has the possibility of making connections from Hoskins to the town parcel for some networking opportunities. One of the other goals of looking at this parcel would be that ultimately trying to get some pedestrian connection, whether it's the back of the skating center or working something with Fish to get out to Hot Meadow so that there is, rather than bringing pedestrians out to Hoskins or Eli, that we can get, um, that connection out to the commercial district. But, you know, the, the simple thing is trying to create a sense of place back there, a village feel and organization, a relationship that the units have opportunity to relate to open space around there. Um, you know, we're looking at something, maybe a hundred units for this parcel, given the, the present regs, you know, your densities. If it was all single family, would be, you know, like a hundred units, and if it was multifamily, it'd be north of three hundred. So we're at a low end of what would have been allowed through the regs for this parcel. So it's a simple thing of trying to make some internal spaces work to feel like you, when you come off of Hoskins, you do enter your place of residence. Really, pretty much that simple.
Just pointing out too, that, that we've been investigating merging in these other properties here, and have not really been successful in, uh, you know, having anybody see their land. But we do want to have access to those properties, should we build this.
Existing development along here still relates to the parcel lines elsewhere, so that it seems logical at a certain point in time that those back parcels would be available. This configuration would allow us to integrate that. If it happened at a later date, if it happened earlier on, I think we would approach it a little bit differently. But the key thing is that if it does become available over time, you know, we have opportunities to logically extend development, make the connections.
Just a couple, I'm sorry, just a couple of things. And I mentioned sewers availability, I just want to also point out that this parcel, because of its allocation industrial, actually has over allocation of sewer, in other words, has more than enough sewer capacity to do a hundred, even more than a hundred units here. Uh, the other thing I want to tell you is that, uh, the brief topographic study, we know that we can basically drain and sewer this piece naturally, there's no pumps or anything, which is nice. And secondly, or thirdly, we did meet with Jeff Shea, we know that under current guidelines, uh, we want to be able to stormwater managers. And what's nice about this property is, especially in the parcel that has not been developed, it's all sand and gravel, so we know that we can keep a lot of this water on site. It's anticipated that we will have to do some kind of a retention, detention fund over here, but we feel pretty strongly that we can engineer this to keep a lot of the water on site, you know, which is, is a positive.
And I think the other really nice thing about this parcel is we have this whole contiguous edge to the town land, and the opportunities of having that kind of open space interface is something that will have to be explored.
Yeah.
So, yes, I know this is a preliminary plan, but is it kind, and you mentioned homeowners, is this, these are, these are sale units, all of them?
No.
Except for the apartment.
These would be rental, it was anticipated these would be rental. I mean, frankly, they'd be probably built so that they could be sold, but my intention would be to rent them, right? So, yes.
But the single-family homes, you would own condominiumized, you would own an individual lodge, you're not going to subdivide the lodge.
Would not be subdivided. So the, the way it would work is, is a term called exclusive use area. So we want people, if you're, if you're gonna buy a house here, we want you to kind of have some kind of, the same pride of ownership as if it was a lot, but it won't be, and we didn't draw those lines in here. It's anticipated that, uh, we find, we find with this, this kind of product, uh, to increase the affordability, we're not gonna force people to hire a management company to do the lawns and whatnot. We find that it's better that they, they can maintain the lawns, keep those costs down and whatnot. But we know we need a management company for the roads and so forth, and for other infrastructure improvements as well. But it would be contemplated that if you buy a house in here, that you would actually have your own little slice of land where, you know, you could do things as if it was a building lot.
This is the same, we did the same thing at Spring Meadow, and once the snow goes away, you guys can actually see that it was very successful as an approach.
Was that under workforce housing or substantial affordable housing?
It was under, we did a tax amendment in Avon that provided at these stages of affordability. So, you know, they, they did not actually have a similar type zone, we kind of created something for that property.
What was the percentage of the property? I guess what I'm getting at is, it just seems like, it just doesn't compute usually, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's seen other parts of the state or other projects, but that you have a private association associated with the workforce slash affordability, I mean, because it's, it's an additional expense at the end of the day.
It is, but, uh, well, let me say this, in, in, in practical terms, in real terms, it doesn't, and that's really why I said, use the exclusive use areas where it's incumbent upon each house owner that they still take care, and there's still some rules, okay? I mean, we want people to, to respect, um, kind of a different level of appreciation for, you know, leaving their, their garbage cans out and so forth. But in terms of the costs, I mean, Spring Meadow today, I mean, we started at seventy-five dollars a month, and that was like eighteen years ago, it's still only a hundred and thirteen, I think.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Yeah, that's about three hundred.
Right, yeah, so that's, if you, if you, if you could take away, the largest costs really are those costs of maintenance of the landscaping and so forth, so...
But the roads and improvements, I mean, if something were to happen to the road, that would fall to the association.
Right, but you do a sinking fund. You know, I mean, we set up a sinking fund there, and fortunately, they've been, I mean, you know, look, we're, we're all human beings, so we try, we try to do as good as we can, but they do have, they have a fund over there now, it's, it's in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's invested, and so, yes, it's contemplated that you have a useful life of probably twenty to thirty years for your roads before you're gonna start making improvements.
I think Ace Lometto has a fund. Ace Lometto, you maintain your property, but you have to pay so much a year for the snow plowing, and they put so much aside for paving every, whatever, many years, curb repairs.
Yeah. But I see what you're getting at, in terms of, it's somewhat oxymoronic to say, you're gonna spend, but, but it works.
It's just the name of the zone, is what you're saying.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
The other thing about there is that eighty, eighty percent of these are all market rate units too. And so I think that sometimes people say, oh, it's a, it's a big affordable development. Only twenty percent of the units are market rate or, you know, I mean, are affordable or workforce.
Is that what the deline, is that the color delineation there?
No, the color delineation is just, single families, townhouses.
Townhomes.
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you said that, because the, the whole point is, there is no delineation. So I'm gonna have Jack show you some houses, and the whole point is, no, we're not, we're not gonna say that an affordable unit goes on site twenty-three.
Right.
That isn't the point. The point is that we're gonna have affordable houses available, and it's probably gonna be first come, first served. Now, I mean, it's not unusual for a developer to have kind of premium sites and whatnot, you know, and maybe these are premiums here because they have to be a little bit more private. But I mean, generally, we're not gonna distinguish, we're gonna say, pretty much, you know, it's almost like on a first come, first served basis. Let me, let me have Jack show you, where's my article?
Real quick before you get this. The apartments especially, I'd like to know where the new Big Y is gonna be in relation to those apartments, because they're gonna be on the backside of the Big Y where all the, you know, real heavy lifting is done.
Well, these are the existing...
You've already got an apartment complex here now.
Oh, it's right there, okay.
This is, these are the apartments.
I'm trying to figure...
So the Big Y would be further east.
Okay. Yeah, 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 yeah.
There's the skating center and the Big Y. This is skating, so these are the apartments.
So, actually, I think that's why Bill designed the parking lot here, so that we could get just, you know, get this as removed as we can for other activities, it makes sense to do that, right?
Jackie?
Yeah, my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. For the areas that you were talking about trying to gain for possible access, your thought is also, if you can, to add additional housing, if you do gain that?
Right.
Another hundred units?
No, 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 I don't think, I don't think it would support that. Uh, well, at lea, at least not for something that I would be proud of, okay?
Two hundred feet isn't that...
You know, you might, there might be another thirty or forty units in there.
Which type of unit would you look at?
Gosh, you're asking me all these things, I don't even know. I, I think probably, I don't think we would do more apartments, I think we might do some more townhouses and some more single. That, that's intuitively...
Just 'cause they do back up to the other residences.
Yeah, so it makes sense to me that you'd have some houses in here, and may, maybe you might have another row of some townhomes here possibly.
But you gotta wait on all these people to sell. That's basically what he's gotta do, these are all homeowners.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, but I know some of these people.
Might be, might be larger than we think, right?
They're not going anywhere.
Yeah, so, but I mean, I think, I think it's good planning to, you know, make provision for it, obviously, to have access into those properties. And frankly, they don't need it because they do front out in Hoskins, but just makes sense to do that.
I mean, if, if that parcel was, parcels were available, I think we'd probably do something a little more whole, a little whole unit for the townhome area, and then still bring the single family back, so you had that transition from existing to proposed. But we don't have them now, so, but the thing is to recognize that that land ultimately will be available, it will be a long time, but...
So with that, Jack, do you wanna...
Sure.
Jack, you're no stranger to Simsbury.
I don't think so. It's been a while. There's two pages of this. Connecticut. And basically, what Bill has asked us to look at was an idea of what kind of mix of housing we could put there, how can we tie these various housing types, the single families, the apartments, and the townhouses together? And we looked to your regulations, which are fairly comprehensive and give a really good guide, including what to do, what not to do, pictures and stuff, which we find kind of helpful, actually. And basically, my read of the regulations is that, basically, you want nice buildings. You want buildings that are massed correctly, that aren't monotonous, that have ins and outs, ups and downs, that relate to the Simsbury feel of architecture. Basically, my read, traditional, although I don't know that it has to be traditional, but my read of them is, you know, vertical windows with window panes, correct trims, recessed entries, porches, all the kind of things that make Simsbury Simsbury. So what we've tried to do is incorporate all of those things in our, our building types. And what we've tried to do is bring a consistency of windows, trims, sidings, and roof shapes that even though the buildings, the apartment building is quite a bit larger than the houses, but that they relate to each other, and you can recognize there's a consistency of detail and theme throughout this. This is the, the apartment building here, twenty-four units. Really designed to be, to appear as two separate buildings, very important to us to, to mass this so that, that there's, it appears as, as two buildings, with a major entrance in the center. Very important, balconies are not just thrown on, they're integrated into the mass of the building. Uh, we've really tried to do a little bit of, of stone veneer and these panels that we've used to kind of break up the height, and really make it appear smaller than it is. Uh, above that, you see the townhouses, where we have porches at every entry, again, the same windows, probably the same size windows, a lot, that we would work with the units throughout the project. Each one of these has a garage, that's important, all the, all the townhouses. And we very much wanted to read as, it, as, you can tell what unit is what. So, but we also don't, we wanted to appear as a completely composed building at the same time, so we're trying to do two things, so I don't want it just like, we're just slicing things, making each piece a different color and stuff. So we wanted to both appear as a nicely composed building that steps down, the garage at the end, but you can still, we move them forward and backward. You can see on Bill's plans that the townhouses have a lot of depth to those footprints, so they're, it's not just a flat facade. And then we go to the houses. Again, the houses are very much based on what Bill did at Spring Meadow, but we tried to sort of up the, the trim and make everything relate to each other. So there's a variety of styles, there's one story, one and a half story, two stories. And again, you, all the, the trim is very similar, everybody has a garage, we've tried to use things like dormers, shutters, porches, and, and nice window headers and stuff to really give them some pop. And, and they are, are, are pretty nicely detailed with the shutters and the garage doors. You can like, play with some of the ceilings on some of them and have some windows going up from the ceilings, or going up through the roof lines. So at this point, that's pretty much where we're at here.
All right, so here's the quiz, which, which one of these units is an affordable? That's what I wanted you to say, you know. Actually, trick question, 'cause actually, these two definitely are both, and this one may actually fall, I have to check on this, but these two definitely would be affordable. So actually, what I'm showing you is really the lower end of the spectrum, you probably have a total of eight models. So to put this into perspective, I mean, realizing the regulation talks about the affordability quotient of how much money per month are you spending on housing? That's really what it's based on today. But in the real world, people say, well, how much does the house cost? All right? So to give you an idea, these houses would be pre-priced probably for the low three-hundred thousand, and then once it would be out of, like, you know, a market rate, probably upwards about mid-fours, maybe even high fours, but, so I would think that you're, you're looking at housing, it's just the low threes, the townhomes, the affordable units would probably be in the two sixty-nine, two seventy-nine range, and then the higher ones would be probably three and a quarters, something like that. The rental rates, I haven't quite figured out yet, obviously, we have to comply, but it's, you know, I mean, you're aware of rental rates in Simsbury now, in the sixteen-hundred to twenty-two-hundred dollar a month. We're talking maybe by twelve to sixteen-hundred dollars. And I frankly don't know how people support twenty-three hundred dollars a month for a rental, but, uh, this would be significantly different than that. Uh, the other thing I failed to mention is that, especially for the apartments, some of those units would also be accessible under the guidelines that were put down by, by H U D.
They'll all be accessible.
Oh, I'm sorry, all be accessible, okay, sorry, Jack, for, for, and I'm, I don't think we're required to do the townhouses, but I'm gonna try to make a couple of those also, you know, be handicapped accessible and whatnot. There is, there's a market for that, and I think, even if we're not required to do it, we're gonna try to do it.
What about some of the one-stories, can you do that?
Yeah, well, we have actually, none of these houses are one-story, believe it or not, they're at least one, well, it's, it's actually a one and a half story, okay?
The one on the upper right isn't one-story?
No, it's not. That's actually a one and a half story house. There's two bedrooms finished up. But you see, it has the appearance that, so then you have what Jack calls the mass to kind of keep everything in kind of perspective. If you look at the back of this house, there's a dormer on it, so you've got your two bedrooms and a bathroom as well. Uh, just a few other things. I mean, nobody wants to paint houses anymore, so these would all be vinyl homes, which, you know, is, is becoming widely accepted now in all price ranges and maintenance is just that people just do not want to maintain their houses. Vinyl windows, vinyl siding. The vinyl industry has come a long way. I mean, I'm, I'm building, I mean, I just sold the house yesterday, but for $820,000 with vinyl siding. Granted, with some trims and whatnot that kind of make it look a little bit different and whatnot, but, um, painting, nobody wants to paint more red.
It's a different world than it was before. And it all comes down to, to me, it's about the, the detailing and what's out in front of what. And if you get the window trim, which they do much better now, and the corners looking substantial, to me, there's not a huge difference between wood and vinyl except that you don't need to paint it, which is, which is good.
So the other thing is that I, I want to do this as what I call a flexible footprint. I'm, I'm not somebody who wants to put unit A on lot 20. What I'm about is, we have eight models or whatever we, we end up with. They're available to be put virtually anywhere, but we don't want the same house put next to each other. Or if we do, we do, Jack does some changes with the windows and whatnot. We make them deliberately different, but we don't want our marketing restricted to the point where, uh, you know, customer A has to pick this unit on that lot. That does not work. I think maybe you saw that at Powder Forest. It doesn't, it doesn't work if you do that. But what does work is if you have homes that all go well together and you have colors that are chosen so that they work well together and you place them the right way on each, on the other side, that I think is a winning combination. Um, I think I've got a big question.
Would they basically be almost customized to the demand?
It's a good way to put it.
So, so I mean, if, if one of the homes isn't really that popular to people who are coming into the showroom, I mean, you're going to have a few houses built, but how phased is this going to be such that you have to kind of figure out the demand along the way and then figure out what, really what homes you're going to build?
Yeah, that's interesting because that's kind of what happened to us at Spring Meadow where, you know, in fact, when we first started that, we didn't even have a home with a first floor master bedroom. And then all of a sudden, we have some folks come in, and this is before the days of age-restricted communities and whatnot. So it kind of became a de facto, I mean, there's no age restriction there, but we ended up with three units that in fact have first floor master bedrooms that are appealing to emptiness. I mean, there's, there's an audience of people out there who don't want that restriction that, you know, they don't mind living in neighborhoods with younger children and teenagers and whatnot, and they, but they might be retired. Uh, having it as a kind of a walkable community, it's, it's kind of like, you know, dare I say, like the neighborhoods that we used to, well, we say we used to live in. Um, so, but to your, to your point that I think you were making is, that's usually what happens, is quite a bit of customization. A lot of builders won't do that in a kind of a, I mean, basically, I'm a custom home builder and I'm used to doing this.
I think it's fair to say we would anticipate that at least one of the townhouse models would have the first floor.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say as well, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. This is a formal presentation. You want feedback from us? And I guess I'd start by asking Hirom, how involved have you been with helping them formulate this?
We've had a couple of discussions. I think that the, the mix of product was interesting. It is the first time that the workforce housing overlay zone is being used. There are a number of people, uh, both local and at the state level that are watching this process to see if it, it works as, as we designed it. We do think that we need, um, some of the product that's, that's being proposed here. I think the fact that it's a single-family, then a townhouse, and then an apartment, I think I talked to Bill one time and said it's really almost a lifestyle community. You could start off in a single-family house, you could move into a townhouse and ultimately to the apartment, and you could still walk the big Y, you know, to get your food, you know, through the skating center parking lot.
Yeah, I think that, that access to the, to the commercial would be really big. I would definitely try and work something out.
I think that, you know, it's town property, assuming the skating center wouldn't mind somebody walking through the parking lot and down.
There's no problem to get them to agree with us.
But it certainly seems to me that, you know, if people had kids and, and wanted to go to the skating center, they certainly could. The big Y is there. There are a number of other things that'll probably go on that lower six acres in the near future. It seems like a very interesting site in the near future.
And, and just in terms of the, the math, uh, you know, again, the idea was by offering the, uh, workforce housing price, you get higher density, so relative to the density without that, what would, how would this project stack up?
Well, just, just by way of, to past history, you all remember Meadowway when that came in at 600 and something units, um, and then ultimately ended up at 299. So the density could be twice as high if somebody came in with an 8-30G application under the statutes right now, and we'd have nothing to say about it at all. So the fact that this regulation says, here's what we'd like to see, you know, come in and see if you can do this, it does offer a slight bump in the density, there's no question, but it does, as Jack said, give some pictures of some ideas and things we'd like to see there. So it's kind of like a, a bit of a cooperative effort kind of card.
But it, but it doesn't seem intensely dense to me just from the end of the plan. So, and the easement, how probably helps with, uh, conservation easement?
Well, even if you move the easement up on the west side, right, the slope area, um, it's still the same, same units, which is unfair. Bill, Bill has a goal of not doing an overdesigned development, and that's really what we're breaking in front of. I mean, yes, this could be a lot more dense, even under your present regs, we're, we're way shy of, yeah, we could have.
That, that was my.
But this is a very comfortable, um, density for this parcel, um, and it allows, as Bill talked about, the opportunity with enough space between the units that you can switch out. It's not so tight that you have to have the units placed exactly where they belong. So you, this trade-off that Bill has accepted, um, produces a, a very good result.
Bill, how does the lot size relate to Spring Meadow? I mean, I'm familiar with Spring Meadows, so how, how does it, I know the local Spring Meadow, how, how does this relate where the house is?
Well, it's certainly, it's probably overall less dense.
Less dense, yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, no, we didn't, did you do the localized testing this idea?
I, no.
Okay. It just looks like it's less dense actually.
My friend is.
You know, if you go between the health, the new health facility and, you're right.
And how about relative to Carson Way?
Uh, probably very similar, actually.
Yeah, I think the, the frontages of the houses where the architects were Carson Way too, and the front, the houses are about the same width, generally.
I mean, again, this is 28 acres and the gross density were under 3.
It's a free per acre overall.
You have to take 100 units in 28 acres.
Well, yeah, actually a bit more too. But not much, right? Yep, yep, yep.
Uh, so I, I guess, we'll start with feedback. I, I, I think it looks like a very interesting project and we're going to use the plan and certainly, uh, we worked long and hard on the workforce relay project, so I would be supportive. My turn, please.
I just have a thought for the homeowners on Hoskins.
Sure.
And I would think that they would want to leave that conservation easement how it, how it originally is now, because it gives them a buffer between their yards and all the new houses that could go in, as opposed to moving it over to the left.
Okay, yeah.
Just a thought, consideration to those.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, we were kind of looking for some input from you guys in that. The reason we came up with that was because this provides kind of a linkage, you know, from other, from other parts of town to what is now Thomas Simsbury land, so. But I get what you're talking about. Understand that, uh, maybe we didn't explain this, that we have 50 feet of conservation easement on the back of these lots. So, so each of these existing lots already has some easement, not shown in this plan, 50 feet up, up there, okay?
But, but that, you're not including that in your.
No, no. So they actually have 250, right? But I think it's important to note that they already have some, uh, existing that's protected as well. But I, I'm hearing what you're saying. I get it.
And you didn't say it, but the road, you take out one, one existing housing unit to buy that lot, the access to Hoskins there, or is that a big lot?
Uh, no, are you talking about here or here?
Uh, there's no, there's no.
There's no home there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell. And you're going to buy the property across the street, fix up the old, uh? I have the same comment on the property you are developing on.
It's not coming out so bad.
It looks good now. There were days and weeks it didn't look good.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough. If it would stop snowing, we could probably finish it in late season, but get some people living here. Yeah, so, yeah, so.
Any other comments or suggestions?
The only thing that I have a little problem, I haven't bought into it yet, is the apartments. I don't see the flow coming from Route 10, working your way up Hoskins Road. You know, we have commercial, and we have some townhouses here for fish, and we have residential, and we had our own apartment building, which I think is pretty sizable. I mean, I would rather see townhomes all the way in and then these, but.
Okay, well, fishes aren't townhomes. Those are apartments.
But you know what I'm saying. I bet it has more of a townhome.
Oh, I see, yeah, they're kind of like garden apartments.
Yeah, I mean, this is a big hefty building, and then when you throw in vinyl siding, that's a big vinyl sided.
Lot of roof on that, huh?
Yeah. Well, I, I just don't personally see it fitting right now, but.
You don't have to go very far to find, uh, 20 of those buildings right up in, uh, Dorsey Cross. So I, I mean, I, I hear, we've approved a lot of apartments.
And that's what I was going to say, too.
Yeah. With that part, I completely agree with you.
I think we, when we say, Hirom, we approved over 500 apartments this last year and a half or whatever, so.
But have you approved any workforce apartments?
No, we did.
That's how that it happened, right?
Actually, yeah, we, we, developer agreed to put 18 units in.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So this would be a.
It's very healthy.
This would be a significant bump for the organization.
It's not working. It's not under a workforce rating.
No, no.
But if, if, if it was all apartment buildings, we could be having a different discussion.
Oh, yeah. I wouldn't either.
I don't. I like, I like the, the, the single-family homes is a very nice aspect.
Well, you know, the other thing too, the differentiator on the apartments is that you're not trying to get, uh, you know, west parker-ed, uh, rents in Simsbury. I mean, you're, you're talking, you were talking about, I don't know, again, I, I go by price per foot, apartment, and, I mean, those are close to three bucks a foot. I mean, I don't know how you do that, but here it sounds like they're a little bit more.
Yeah, I don't know. And actually, some of these guys aren't doing so well, I think, in terms of, you know, uh, what they've been able to run off. I don't agree, Chris Nelson did very well. I mean, he's got a great product there, it's beautiful, but it's amazing to me what people pay for rents. I'm looking, I'm looking to serve a different audience.
All right, last chance for some feedback. It'll take our positive feedback.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
You can.
Make it easy for you. It's a parking. It's got a really.
Reduce the half, the half of the parking, right?
I, I wrote that down, actually. It's just such a big.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I thought that was commercial. I was going with that. Say it, Jerry.
Move the U-turn.
Doesn't take much, way past.
Can you prove my point?
Way past my eight thirty. Uh, okay, so we got a couple of other things. Discussion of new and ongoing projects, questions for fiscal year 2015, 16.
Yeah, the, uh, discussion for all the land use department budgets has been set for Thursday, March, I think it's 5th, whatever that Thursday is.
So that's in front of the slot?
Yes, yes. And so I'll, I'll let you know that specific date.
Send me the, all costs.
I will do it as.
March what?
I think it's 5th. It's a Thursday, I think it's March 5th.
At what time?
I don't know yet. Probably going to start around 5:30, but I'm not certain about.
I agree with you.
So, well, I will. Originally it was on Saturday, but I think they changed it. The other thing I wanted to just let you know is that the, um, agreement for the zoning reg, uh, revisions has been put together, approved by town attorney, and the first selection has that. Hopefully it'll get signed the next day or so, and we'll be off and running some of our public meetings to talk about things like lighting and signs and some of the, and the shared parking thing that are big issues that we'll be talking about shortly. So that should be starting up probably in March.
So in all seriousness, we need to do something about this, because we went through this just a year ago, and we had all of these same discussions, you know, we came up with the regulations, we voted on it, we had public hearings, and we approved it, but it's not working. I agree. I, I see the, I see the issues with it. Uh, but we've got to, we've got to have, uh, we've got to have some concepts that we can agree on as, or, and can be consistent.
In terms of passing more of them? Or, again, what's the goal?
I think, I think that there, there's a, there's a couple of different things. One is, I, I hear what some of you are saying about the, the regulation that exists, there's a, there's a flip side too, in terms of trying to preserve the structures and allow people to stay in their homes, and that's a really important part to take into consideration of it.
I don't agree with that. I, I'm just saying, yeah, I mean.
You're distinguishing between what's going to be income property and what's not, and adding parking, which versus what he's saying is keeping the same occupants there, which you're not adding parking.
You're putting a 2015 structure on the back of a 1960 structure. I don't, I don't care how you do it. You're not going to make it.
And you're, you're also doing it next to people who bought into a neighborhood as a family.
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
This, this.
Have you been to Long Island?
I know, I didn't really want to do this in 1915. But we have, we have to do this, and we have to figure out a forum where we can have this discussion, uh, at the public hearing. So that we get town feedback, so we have a regulation we can live with. Because to me, the, the issue, I just said I wasn't going to do this, but to me, the big issue is that if they don't want to put the kitchenette in that house, they don't come here, they just do it. And we have, and we, we spend a lot of time fixing places where they went ahead and got the building permit, so anyway, we, we've got to figure out.
Can we put it on the agenda?
But we will. We certainly will.
Oh, okay.
You missed the, you, we worked on this for a year to get to where we are, which is.
No, it's not.
So, all right. Uh, I have one other item, which is that I understand that Derek is voluntarily giving up his volunteer position up as our representative, and onto the task force for.
Yeah. EDC task force. And that's what I was, didn't even know.
You were volunteered for by me?
And, and the open space as well, thank you.
Oh, they do both of those?
Yeah. But I'm, I'm, I'm sticking with the open space.
All right. So I think we need somebody that's, that's new to the board, that would be very interested if the, I evolved in, uh, someone like Jack? That could represent us on, what is it called?
EDC TF Task Force, EDC Task Force.
Maybe, maybe we want to wait till we have everybody here and give everybody a chance